Welcome everyone to the candidate forum for Alhambra City Council. We're going to be presenting this in several languages. And here are the instructions for accessing non-English translations. Attendees will receive the English language-
I can't hear. I'm not even able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, someone did something. Yes, now I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Attendees will receive English language transmission automatically. But if you prefer to listen in another language, you can see on your Zoom screen located perhaps at the bottom, depending upon your device, button and just tap the button for whatever language you'd like. Your choices of translated languages. One is MA for Mandarin, CA for Cantonese, SP for Spanish, VI for Vietnamese. It's my understanding that you can return to English by tapping EN or choose another language at any time. Other instructions for different languages. Q and A, the question and answer box. Should you think of a question during the event? Please input that or have somebody input it in English. Okay, because it has to go through several steps before I as the moderator gets it. Okay, we have a very special guest tonight who's quite experienced with being a candidate and sympathetic. And she's an office holder and is very used to interfacing with her constituents. It is an honor to welcome California State Senator Susan Rubio.
Thank you so much. First of all, it's an honor to be invited to join you here today. I am your state senator Susan Rubio and I represent the entire Sangueiro Valley. Alhambra happens to be one of my beloved cities. And so I want to take a moment to thank the League of Women Voters for this platform. She's right, I have been a candidate for quite a bit now. First, as the elected city clerk for four years. So I have the privilege of handling elections, voter engagement, registration and that kind of stuff. But you're also celebrating 100 years of, you know, of your existence, of civic engagement, promoting our democracy. So thank you so much. So a lot of thanks to all the people that helped organize this. I know there's several sponsors, so I want to make sure that they also get acknowledged. I have here Alhambra Preservation Group, Alhambra Source, Alhambra Latino Association, Voice of Immigrant Students, Alhambra Boosters. So again, thank you for this wonderful platform. I know how stressful it can be for candidates and I've been there many, many times. And so I want to take a moment to say to all the candidates, thank you for wanting to represent. I know that the ordinary citizen doesn't understand how hard of a task you have ahead of you. It's a lot of work and you do it because you care. And so because you care, I think that we should all be thankful that someone like yourselves want to take on this task. It is a seven day a week job. I know it firsthand. I was a former elected council member in the city of Baldwin Park. And you work every single day, sometimes all the way to 11, 10 o'clock at night. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So I just wanted to say to all the listeners out there, civic engagement is-
A la audiencia.
Is the most important thing we can do.
It's the most important thing we can do. The fact that we have this platform-
Where they can-
That we have this platform.
Nellie, I can hear you. Nellie, I can hear you. Nellie.
Thank you. I know that there was another voice over me. But I just wanted to say to everyone listening at home, civic engagement is one of the most important things you can do for your community. And the fact that this platform exists for you to get to hear the candidates, get to hear who they are, what they're about, what they bring to the table is really important. During this pandemic, during these unemployment crises and fires that we're experiencing, they're going to be making the most important decisions for you and your city and your businesses. We handle things from potholes to lighting to programs. And being informed is absolutely the most important thing you can do. A lot of voters go to the vote, to the booth, not knowing who people are. And sometimes I think it does a disservice for candidates like yourselves that want to come and really show people who you are and what you do and what you're all about. So once again, thank you to all the candidates. Good luck to all of you. And my job as a senator is to always represent everyone equally and be very mindful that all of you matter to me. It doesn't matter who you are, who's successful or not. I still represent everyone equally. My door is always open, not only to the candidates as candidates, as electeds and all the residents of Alhambra as well. So I have today the privilege of being asked to lead us in the flag salute. So I'm going to ask all of you who have flags in front of you to please place, face your flag. I have one right in front of me. Put your right hand over your heart.
And then, let me, let me-
Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the republic, our way to stand.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So once again, an honor to be here. Thank you for allowing me these few minutes to connect. And if I can leave you with any messages, let's get out to vote. It doesn't matter who you're voting for, what your party affiliation is. It is the, you know, the centerpiece of our democracy. And that's it. We all exercise that right to go vote. And please, our candidates are here to share who they are. Go to their websites. If you don't get enough in this forum, go to their websites. Each one of them, I'm sure, has a website where you can get more information. And thank you again. And now you-
Thank you very much.
We do have an interference with one of the interpreters' channels. So if that can be somehow channeled, rechanneled, that would be wonderful. So welcome, as we celebrate our ability to assemble peacefully while socially distant, to the Alhambra City Council Candidate Forum for the election ending on November 3rd. We thank our sponsors, which Senator Rubio mentioned. I'm going to mention again, because they really are good people in the community. Alhambra Latino Association, Alhambra Preservation Group, the Alhambra Source and the Alhambra Visa Boosters. In this election, we have five candidates for two seats, with each seat having a four-year term in office. This forum has been organized to give Alhambra voters the opportunity to be more informed about their choices in the upcoming election. And it goes both ways, to have the candidates informed about what's important from some of the constituents. I am Bonnie Skolnick, a member of the League of Women Voters Pasadena area, a regional organization which includes 13 now San Gabriel Valley communities, including of course, Alhambra. The League of Women Voters is a political but nonpartisan organization. That means that we study and act upon public policies, issues, but never endorse or support candidates or parties. The League's charter is to promote informed and active participation in government through education and advocacy. The League is very pleased to assist as part of our voter service program. The League itself, as Senator Rubio mentioned, is celebrating its 100th anniversary. It was founded, it was founded six months before the 19th amendment came into being. I'd like to introduce this evening's League team. In keeping with League's practice of nonpartisanship, no members of our team reside within the voting jurisdiction
None of those-
represented by these candidates. Our first member of our team, besides the moderator, is Betty Morin. And Betty, let's get you up here. Okay, our timekeeper. Where is Betty? Let me find her. Okay, where in the world is Betty? There she is. Okay. Betty Morin keeps the candidates informed of the time remaining and will raise the appropriate paddles with the correct time remaining. For instance, in the opening is two minutes, but when it's one minute long, that's what you'll see. We ask the candidate to keep one eye on the timer, the paddles, as you are looking at your notes or speaking. So there's a one-minute sign, there's a 30-second sign. And then there's the dreaded stop sign. Okay, the red sign will be displayed at the conclusion of a candidate's allotted speaking time. Once the candidate's time is up, his or her statements need to be concluded within one or two sentences, not a paragraph. Candidates, please include, as I had said, the timekeeper in your sight. Our question sorters are Jane Wallace and Maureen Johnston. Question sorting means grouping together written questions on the same subject, eliminating duplicates, and when rarely needed, filtering out questions inappropriate to the election topics. Now, many of the questions have been pre-submitted, you know, when attendees registered. So that is good. But we also welcome questions. Many times, as our candidates are answering, new questions will come into your mind. In addition to our League team, we have experienced embedded local interpreters. Lilia Leung for Cantonese, Josephine Chin for Mandarin, Nellie Chong for Spanish, and Lin Lu for Vietnamese. So next are the rules of the forum and sort of an overview, which has been, these have been agreed upon by the candidates. Each candidate will give an opening statement of two minutes to give insight to his or her background and candidacy. The candidates will be speaking in the order determined previous to our starting the forum. In the question and answer portion, the candidates will be answering questions from the audience or from the audience that were pre-submitted online. And audience members again may continue to submit questions during the forum. Again, use the Q and A box. Candidates do not look at the Q and A box. The questions will be sorted through our question sorters. So you just have to listen to the moderator. Audience members again can submit questions during the forum. The following rules do apply to all questions. Questions must be in the form of questions, not statements. They may be directed at one candidate or at all candidates. If directed at one candidate, other candidates do have the opportunity to answer. Questions must deal with the issues of the election. No personal references to family, religion will be allowed. Each candidate will have one minute to answer an audience question and will be tracked by the timekeeper. Between 8:30 and 8:40, the question period will be terminated and closing statements will begin. We hope, and I'll tell you the timing on that when we get there. These statements will be given in reverse order of the opening statements. Candidate remarks will conclude at that time. Are there any questions from the candidates at all? Okay. Okay, we're going to start, you know, we have five candidates for two seats. One candidate could not attend today, but according to League practice, we do allow somebody to give, to submit a written statement. And so I will read that from candidate Carson Luthi, who says, "I'm, my name is Carson Luthi and I am a candidate for Alhambra City Council District Four. I have served on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Alhambra Business Association since 2015 and as committee member on the Alhambra Committee for Arts and Cultural Events since 2017. You can find my biography and specific ideas for moving Alhambra forward by reading your official voter guide and visiting my website, This election is a matter of economic survival for many small businesses in Alhambra. This is not hyperbole, it is fact. This should be important to you. Small business, local businesses generate much-needed tax revenue to help fund vital services such as public safety, create good-paying jobs, and provide essential goods and services to residents and visitors. No other candidate will do more for our small business community than I will, and that means improved quality of life for you. In District Four, your three candidate choices are very different. I have real-world experience to lead in revitalizing small businesses and recruiting new ones. And I'll begin by pushing hard for change in the management of our ineffectual community development department. I will create needed change. Choose wisely, Alhambra." And again, his website is www.ka-r-s-e-n-l-u-t-h-i, carsonluthi.com. Thank you, Mr. Luthi. We are ready to start opening statements from our live candidates. We'll start with Mr. David Mejia.
Good evening.
Two minutes.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is David Mejia and I'm the current mayor of Alhambra, running for reelection for Alhambra City Council. This past year, the city of Alhambra has gone through an unprecedented pandemic, which killed 29 of our residents, cost thousands of jobs, and closed down so many of our businesses. While others were out campaigning and complaining about what is wrong with our city, I was taking care of the needs of our community and ensuring that we had the services that we needed to prevent further deaths. My colleagues and I approved funding for COVID-19 testing, reallocated resources to assist residents with rent, while balancing our budget, avoiding layoffs of our employees, and not cutting any of our city's services. That is why I have come against Proposition 15, which could be catastrophic to our small businesses already struggling and inching one step closer to jeopardizing the protection under Prop 13 to our homeowners. I have also come out against Proposition 16, which would punish the students here in Alhambra who work so hard to achieve academic excellence and places races and quotas over hard work and dedication. I represent Alhambra, not the needs of other communities. This election is about continuing our success and having someone represent you who has both life and professional experience to move the needs of our entire community forward. Renters and homeowners, small businesses and their employees, and everyone that makes up Alhambra. Finally, I am proud that during my time as your elected official, we approve a balanced budget every year, including this year, with the COVID-19 pandemic that we lost a lot of sales revenue tax. Remember, we are one city, one Alhambra. And with your vote, I will continue to represent everyone that makes our city a special place to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia. Our next opening statement is from Ms. Perez, Sasha Perez. Yes, Betty?
I'm sorry, but for some reason I went off camera again and I was not able to use the paddles. But I had my, I had my timer on, so he didn't go over the two minutes. But for some reason, I keep going off camera. Okay, I'm ready.
Yeah, we've, we've had some, yeah, we've had our technical difficulties, but the spirit's going to overcome it. So, okay, Ms. Perez.
Good evening, Alhambra residents. My name is Sasha Renee Perez. I have been a lifelong resident of the city of Alhambra. I went to Monterey Highlands Elementary School. After that, went to Mark Heppel High School and Alhambra High School. And then went to Cal State LA. I'm a proud product of this community. I have fallen in love with policy work and that has been my work for the last 10 years. I have had the pleasure of working in policy at every level of government, at the state level, the county level, and at the city level. I spent time working at the Pat Brown Institute for Public Affairs, where I've worked on municipal policies with the city of Los Angeles and with cities in the southeast, really training residents to understand how city government works and also training them to understand how to get policy done in our local cities. About three years ago, I decided that I needed to do this same kind of transformative policy work right here in the city of Alhambra. And since I made that decision, I have had the most excellent time organizing with so many of you, so many of our neighbors, fighting for things like an inclusionary housing ordinance, which was just successfully passed, thanks to the efforts of our advocates here in the city of Alhambra, fighting to make sure that we have designated bike lanes and also organizing to ensure that we have a climate action plan and engaging with discussions with current council members. I am so proud of the work that I've been able to accomplish and the connections that I've made over time with my neighbors here. And I am so excited to serve all of you as your representative at the city council for Alhambra. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Mr. Maloney.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening. I'd first like to say thanks to the League of Women Voters for moderating tonight and thanks to all the sponsors for putting this event on. I know it's important to everyone here, because I know you're missing a Dodger and a Laker playoff game to be here. It's been an honor to serve the residents of Alhambra these last four years. I ran on a platform of bringing positive change to City Hall by advocating for environmental sustainability, increased accessibility, and improving our overall quality of life. I'm really pleased with the progress we've made. We joined the Clean Power Alliance, adopted a tree preservation ordinance, became a Tree City USA, and expanded our electrical vehicle charging stations. We strengthened public outreach, noticing requirements for construction projects, adopted a language access policy, and made sure our meetings were accessible during COVID. I led the charge to secure nearly $200 million to make improvements to our roads and freeways that reduce traffic and save a lot of stress in our lives. I'll focus on a sustainability action plan, an alternative transportation plan, zoning code updates, historic preservation, expanding our city parks. I'll also focus on resiliency to make sure that Alhambra can bounce back from the kind of disasters that we have. I'm running a clean, honest, and positive campaign and I'm taking an oath to stick to my word. I'm committed to focusing on the issues and not engaging in negative campaigning. I'm also proud to say that I'm not accepting campaign contributions from developers, city contractors, and special interest groups. I'm also pleased that my opponent has agreed to that same oath and committed to being person that she will also run a clean, positive, issues-focused campaign. As a friend and neighbor, I greatly appreciate it. I'm an optimistic person who thinks that Alhambra's best days are in our future. It'll require hard work and leaders who have a clear vision for the future. And I'm looking forward to tonight's discussion to share my vision with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. And Ms. Olson. Unmute, please. Unmute.
I am unmuted. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris Olson. I graduated from Cal State Los Angeles with a degree in sociology. And after some graduate study, I went to work in the nonprofit sector in organizations working to advance the rights of women and girls. I learned a lot of valuable lessons about nonprofit management from that experience and I started a consulting firm with my wife Lisa, advising nonprofit organizations on fund development and grant writing. In 1989, we moved to Alhambra and bought a home. Over the years, our nonprofit clients included organizations, large and small, with a focus on social justice programs. After losing Lisa to cancer in 2015, I continued to do this work as an independent consultant. My path to running for city council began in 2004, when I got actively involved with a group of people interested in saving our historic architecture. Alhambra Preservation Group led its, held its first historic home tour that year and its members began to advocate in 2004-
In the 2004 Preservation Order.
We are-
Although they haven't yet completed their goal, they will continue.
And I'm proud to have been a founding board member and president of APG. But it was through that experience that I came to realize just how many barriers there are to citizen engagement and local government and how many people are left out of the conversation entirely because their voices are not heard. And in recent years, I've seen an increasing amount of anger and frustration expressed by-
There's frustration in public meetings for those-
That frustration-
They also want everyone to have a chance to speak, so that the government can hear their voices. And they have also participated in a lot of different institutions. In 2018, they were helping to select the candidates. And they also helped to identify candidates who are transparent and popular to everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to get in-
And then we'll-
And now we're going to answer some of the questions. Event tonight.
Okay, we're going to start answering the questions. We're going to turn around and answer the questions. And we're going to start with Ms. Perez. We're going to start with a question that was submitted. It was submitted with the registration. It's almost unusual.
Of many of the questions that you're going to be hearing.
There are a lot of questions. It's almost like a story. She wrote it very well. It also talked about a lot of things about the city. It was a very attractive city. There are a lot of different cultures. How can you balance them? And for each种族, what is needed? And how can you serve them? That's a big question. And now we're going to summarize it.
Number one, and any of the candidates could have written this question themselves. Do you support the construction of the villages on Fremont and Mission? Why or why not? Ms. Perez.
Yeah, so I've already, you know, have shared my public position on this with many of our residents and I am in opposition to the construction of the villages project. And that's really for a couple of reasons. But the number one main reason is because it lacks an affordable component. We are in the middle of an affordable housing crisis. We can continue to call it a housing crisis, but it is an affordable housing crisis. The fact that we do not have any sort of affordable element in the largest development that is going to happen in the city of Alhambra is absolutely unacceptable. Residents here in the city of Alhambra make a median income of $55,000 a year. I make less than that. So do many of our residents here. They are not going to be able to afford units that are above moderate income. We need to build for the people that currently live here and we need to make sure that the population that lives in this city has access to the kind of affordable housing that they need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maloney.
Yes, it's a, it's a good question. A lot of information there. I need to be clear about one thing is that because this is a quasi-judicial issue that may come before the city council, I cannot take a position on it, yes or no. Otherwise, I may have to recuse myself when it comes before me. And I want to make sure I have a say in what happens there. In general, any big housing project for me that comes into Alhambra has to do three things. It has to make sure that there is sufficient affordable housing, at least consistent with our recently adopted inclusionary housing ordinance. It needs to make sure that there are meaningful traffic mitigation. That means investment in public transit, encouragement to get out of your car and to walk and to take alternative transportation when possible, and to make sure that any new development is contributing and not taking away from public open space. Alhambra is already a park-core city compared to the rest of LA County. And any new development, any large-scale new development, in my opinion, has to make sure that we have significant increase to our public open space. So affordable housing, traffic, and park and open space are my main issues with any new development that comes in.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Olson?
Yes, I've shared my concerns about the villages with the Planning Commission and in other meetings. They and I do not support it. Here are my reasons. The property owner benefited from an amendment to the general plan that dramatically increased the property's value through spot zoning. And the city's former mayor is the developer's lobbyist. This speaks to, I think, part of the issues raised in Measure V. The property is owned by a foreign investment firm whose goal is to make money for its investors through the creation of 1,061 housing units that most Alhambrians can afford. It does not effectively address the housing crisis.
The emergency ordinance that went into went into effect. And I would refer people to the L A County COVID website, especially in this time, because it provides a lot of information, a lot of resources for renters and other people looking for assistance during this time. But they, I think we all should applaud them because they really have taken a leadership role in this, especially on the issue of housing.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to transportation. Another easy topic. What is your assessment of public transportation in our community? What ideas might enhance it? Let's start with Mr. Mejia.
Transportation is a, how was it unmuted, is a big topic in our city because we already, I mean, I live a couple of blocks away from Fremont and Maine, where we have the epicenter of all the traffic in the world. So our city has been very proactive in trying to give options such as our Act Bus. You know, matter of fact, the Act Bus are hybrids, so we're helping with the emissions. But we're also going to be bringing in the bike lane. We're doing a study now. And we're also doing a multimodal just to reduce traffic just in our city. We're encouraging more walking, you know, just for our community members. It's good exercise, but we want people to get out. And we have some plans in the works such as the old, you know, looking at doing Alhambra where it's a walkable area or even down Valley where I live at, where we're trying to get close. So we're looking at different options just to reduce traffic in our community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
Yeah, so you know, this is a really critical issue for the city of Alhambra. I know traffic is obviously horrendous, especially when you're going down Fremont and Valley. You know, I think the only way that we're truly going to reduce traffic is by getting people out of their cars and getting them to use different modes of transportation. And, you know, I have some ideas to resolve that. I think first, number one, we need to have dedicated bike lanes. I know that there was bike lane paths that were pitched initially last year. And unfortunately, none of them are dedicated bike lanes. We need them in the city. It is very unsafe to bike in the city. On top of that, we need to improve the routes for the ACT. The ACT routes currently mostly serve our student population. I wrote that ACT is a high school student. But unfortunately, if you're an adult like myself or any of you guys here, it's very hard to travel to places like Target, to places like Main Street, because the routes aren't frequent enough. So we kind of need to reamounten this system to really get folks out of their car. And on top of that, you know, I think we really need to examine the sidewalks we have in place to ensure that they are easily accessible for those that are utilizing wheelchairs.
Thank you. Ms. Mr. Maloney?
Yes. As was mentioned, we are in the process of going through an alternative transportation plan, developing an alternative transportation plan. The goal is to get people out of the cars. The goal is to get people to walk, make it more attractive, be a pedestrian and a bicyclist, make it safe and attractive. I have two young kids. We like to go biking. And sometimes it just doesn't feel right to be doing that. And we have to do better for our community. I will also mention that we are in the process with Metro of completing a next generation bus plan, bus study that will tell us exactly where the need is for routes through our city. I agree with that. I think we've talked for many months, many years about a shuttle up and down Fremont Boulevard in particular that will take people who work and live in that area up to the Gold Line Station, maybe down to Cal State LA or even to the Gold Line Station in East L A Monterey Park. You know, at the end of the day, this has to go into city planning. We have to figure out a way to plan our city to make it attractive to walk and to bike and to not getting your cars every time you need to leave the house. That's the most crucial thing, and that's the most important, city planning and where we locate things.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Olson?
Thank you. Well, traffic is the one issue that pretty much everyone here agrees on and everyone in the community. Bad, and it's getting worse with every new development. And I think it's the result of planning that for decades focused on the continuation of the seven ten is the only solution to traffic congestion. In the meantime, residents along the northbound freeway route on Valley and Fremont have suffered from poor air quality and noise. And I think that continued growth will require, among other things, an investment in a more effective local Act Bus system that will get people where they need to go quickly and easily. We establish protected Class Three bike lanes that will allow people to safely commute to work and school. And an addition of a shuttle to the Gold Line Station. I think these can be subsidized in part by developer fees, but the city will have to invest local dollars as well. There's just no easy answer to the question of transportation.
Okay, thank you. Are there plans to pave deteriorating roads? And if so, what is the funding source? Let's start with Ms. Perez.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. You went up. Our deteriorate roads. I heard the end of it.
Yes, sorry. Are there plans to pave, repave deteriorating roads? If so, what are the funding sources or source or sources?
So, you know, I can speak to, you know, some of the dollars that are being used for Measure R dollars in term to improve, you know, some of the seven type stub areas to make it so that we can improve traffic flow. I do know that those dollars are some dollars that are coming down the pipeline. And that's going to involve some very heavy road construction and is also supposed to significantly improve traffic flow. In terms of which roads are up for repavement, I can't speak to that specifically. And I honestly couldn't tell you and couldn't give you a list off the top of my head. But I do know that Measure R dollars are going to be utilized to do some major construction in order to improve some of that traffic flow and improve some of these major stub areas.
Okay, Mr. Maloney?
Yes, you know, as anyone in local government knows, paving streets in any community is like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You start, you get across the city, and then you have to start over because roads deteriorate and heat and the rain and the constant abuse from cars. Another added benefit if we actually reduced vehicle traffic through our city. The main source of funding that we're going to be relying on into the future is funding that we're obtaining from S B one, unfortunately named the gas tax, but it does provide direct funding taxes, drivers and people that drive their car and fill it with gas, a small amount to pave city streets throughout the state. And this is a godsend for cities like Alhambra who have limited general funds to do that with. But that is the main source in addition to other sources. So we are constantly moving through the city. It may not seem like it's happening, but you will see the street paving contractors out there on a regular basis redoing streets throughout the city. This is happening every day throughout the city.
Thank you. Ms. Olson?
Well, yes, I know that S B one does provide funding, state funding through the gas tax. But again, I can't tell you where we are in the process right now, although I do know that over the last, well, in the last year, streets in my area of the city were repaved and slurry sealed. So it's a process. It will continue, and we have to adapt to it.
Okay, Mr. Mejia?
Yes, I know Mr. Maloney just mentioned the S B one tax, but also we have what's called the Capital Improvement Project that we, every year, we decide where we're going to actually spend some improvement on roads and stuff. In the past, we've gotten grants, you know, from Metro to do a couple of things on Mission. We're looking, from my understanding, this year to do some work on my district, finally District Four. We're going to get some of our areas repaved because we are hit pretty hard with a lot of cross through traffics. I know they like to fill the potholes, but they're only good for about six months. So I'm glad we're getting some finally in my area where I live at, not live at, but in my little district. And we're continuing. Every year, the city assesses where we got to pave them. And once they do their test, they'll go in there with the funding that we get from both the S B and the capital improvement funding that we have. So hopefully, every, hopefully, in the next couple of years, we'll get our streets paved. But like Mr. Maloney said, we'll probably have to repay them in a few years again, but because we're a busy, heavy congested area with traffic.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to safety. In the 2021 fiscal budget plan, why is the budget for police double the amount for parks and recreation and so much more than the budget for the library? Let's start with Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, it's a good question. I know it's a hot topic around the community. And the primary reason is that police personnel are, they require a lot of funding. It requires funding to pay for them, for their hours, for overtime, for equipment, for long-term benefits, pension and what have you. We have a wonderful police force in this community that is progressive, and they are in front of the curve on many, many issues. I can't comment on why it's more expensive than the library or parks. I think that's sort of comparing apples and oranges to a very large extent. But I'm in favor of increasing parks budget quite a bit and the library as well. With our police force, I'm happy that they make our job easy because they've adopted, they've been upfront of a lot of policies, like I said, that are forward-thinking, that deal with issues like mental health before they use use a force. I'm proud of our police force. I support them, and we are always open to reform and staying ahead of the curve on these issues.
Thank you. And Mr. Mejia?
Well, I mean, I've been a 25-year veteran of the L E P D. You know, it's, public safety is very important in our community. Earlier this year, we passed overwhelmingly Measure A L, which was a sales tax increase for public safety. They take, like Mr. Maloney says, a lot of the money just because of all the training, all the equipment, all the other materials. If I had more, if we had more money, obviously, we'd stick them into parks and records. That's my other second thing. I love the parks. I love kids and everybody playing at the parks and having more services. But for now, I know they take about the general fund, I think they take about sixty-eight percent of it, which is right on that. But if we decide to reduce it, that's a bad thing because, I mean, the last thing we want to do is have less police officers and firefighters out there. And, you know, obviously, the times, the response times are going to reduce. So that's one thing that we need to sustain that, that those two, that public safety aspect of our city.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, Ms. Olson. I did go out of our order here. So would you take the answer right now?
Yes, thank you. It's true of all cities that public safety dollars are the largest segment of the budget of the General Operating Fund. And I want to say that my experiences with the Alhambra Police Department have been uniformly positive and respectful. And I trust the department and its leadership, and I want to be sure that everybody in the community has the same experience I do. And that those dollars are spent in ways that keep everybody safe without reinforcing racism and putting community members at risk. And I know that the police are asked to respond daily to problems that require all kinds of skills, including conflict mediator, social worker, crisis counselor, addiction specialist and peacekeeper. And so I wonder if it's always best for the person who responds to calls about homeless people or loud parties to be armed and authorized to use deadly force. So as regards the library and parks, yes, absolutely. I wish there were a larger segment of the budget for those functions. But I'd also like to invest some dollars in mental health services.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Perez?
So, you know, Chris took the words right out of my mouth. I think it would be extremely useful for us to kind of expand our idea of public safety to also include some mental health resources as well, right? I think that we are able to stop crime from the start. And that's by making sure that we have mental health resources available, that we're able to make sure that people's basic needs are met. That includes making sure that people have access to food and housing. All of that is super important. I think one of the big reasons why you'll notice that policing is such a significant part of the budget is because it takes a lot to hire people, right, and to also cover those pensions. And so, you know, that's, that's part of the reason we have, you know, a great union here in Alhambra. And, you know, those officers, you know, once they retire are going to need to continue to retain those benefits. And so that's the technical answer as to why you see those budget numbers so high and why that tends to be the case for so many other cities as well.
Thank you. And I have noticed a rise in crime in Alhambra. Do you favor installing cameras at the park as a deterrent to crime? And we need to start with Ms. Olson.
Well, actually, it appears that crime is declining in Alhambra, at least over the past year. I can't speak to the last few months, but I do not support public surveillance. I don't think, I think the intrusion on our privacy is a detriment to our freedoms. And so I would not support the addition of cameras to our public parks.
Okay, Mr. Mejia?
Yes, ma'am. You know what? Crime is rising. I don't know where Ms. Olson got her fact. There's a thing called Proposition Forty-Seven that was passed a few years ago by our former governor where they decriminalize a lot of crimes. Unfortunately, the crimes that we get in Alhambra, they're not the, you know, obviously, we'll have our homicide here and there, but we do have a lot of property crime. Those cameras are important because, if we do that kind of stuff, because it will help us catch suspects. Because unfortunately, Alhambra is such a great community that we are targets for victims. But, you know, people go to work here, and when they're at work, they're getting burglarized or their cars are getting burglarized. And I know one of the big things that's going on with our city right now is the catalytic converter, where they're breaking into taking the cars from, you know, Priuses and Hondas. So we do have crime here, and that any type of surveillance that we need will help our police officers in capturing some of these criminals. You know, so at the end of the day, is crime is important to me because, like I said, I work for the L E P D, and I don't like to see what I see in Los Angeles. So when I come home, I want my residents to feel safe. So anything we can do to reduce crime, I'm going to be supporting it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Perez?
So, you know, I, I think that in particular, we could use some cameras, but in one specific area, that's in Almanzur Park. I know many of the residents that are watching right now heard about an elderly, a senior woman that passed away just recently. We've had about three seniors, I think, within the last year pass away by the lake or in the lake that were suffering from mental illnesses. I think that installing some cameras specifically in that area could kind of help to monitor that situation. I think there's a lot of other questions, who's going to be monitoring those cameras and who would be watching over them? I don't think that we need to be installing cameras all throughout our parks. But I do think in this particular area, given the frequency of deaths that we've had of our seniors, that it would be useful to specifically monitor, monitor this area.
Okay, Mr. Maloney?
Sure. You know, as a general rule, I'm hesitant to say we should be installing parks to do general surveillance in our parks. I actually come from a background in parks. I currently work for a park agency. And we actually utilize cameras on a very limited basis. We manage our own upwards of eighty thousand acres all throughout the Santa Monica Mountains and surrounding areas of Los Angeles. And it's hard to track all that with a ranger staff of, you know, twenty or so. So we use that. We use it for resource protection to make sure that we are monitoring what's happening on our properties. And I think that's appropriate. I wouldn't support general cameras, camera installations just to, just to monitor everything that's going on in our parks. But I would defer to law enforcement. If there are particular areas of concern, I would be willing to consider that where they are particularly hard to monitor. But at the end of the day, as we say in the park world, good use pushes out bad use. So I would encourage more people to get out and use their parks and use them in a good way. And that tends to dissuade people from committing bad.
Thank you very much. Are you satisfied with the waste management in Alhambra? If not, what would you like to see changed? And let's start with Mr. Mejia.
Hi. The waste management issue, you know, trash is a very important issue in our community. People expect certain jobs to get done. And, you know, I've heard stories through our waste company where, you know, where my mom's trash isn't get picked up. And who does my mom call? She calls me to roll back in the trash cans when they're not picked up. So obviously, I know the trash company's been doing some good jobs where they're putting actual GPS trackers on the trucks to make sure that they're going as these residents when they're supposed to, because if not, they have an issue. I know they've been working a lot with their P R, because, for example, when a resident needs something picked up, they've actually come on a Saturday or actually by a pump and will come and pick up the stuff. So our waste management, I mean, it could always improve. Nobody's perfect, but, I mean, they're doing a good job. But like I said, at the end of the day, is people really care about their trash. They don't want to see, you know, sofas out on the street or, you know, or mattresses. They want those things picked up, and those are quality of life issues. Obviously, if you see that kind of activity, you call code enforcement or the local trash, and they will come and pick it up. So I'm satisfied, but there's room for improvement on anything else because, you know, it's a service that we pay a lot of money through our, through our taxes for the community. So I said, that's my answer for that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
You know, I'm very satisfied with our current contractor, which is Republic. I think that they've done a very excellent job. I think the only thing that I would like to see in our community would be for us to start a composting program. I know composting is something that is a bit more common in other states such as Oregon and Washington. But we have a community here in Alhambra that is very invested in gardening. Some of you are probably a part of the Alhambra Plant Swap Group. It's a very active group. And because of the pandemic, many people have started investing more in planting and growing things in their backyard. And so I think having access, you know, to rich soil that comes from composting would be a great community benefit. I think many residents here would utilize it. And it would also be an efficient way to reduce our waste as well. So I would love to pursue that. And also, you know, I've talked with Republic about it as well. And I know that they're very interested in the possibility too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, you know, like the others, I don't have any major day-to-day complaints with our current service. I think that they provide definitely adequate service and they're responsive when, when issues come up. I do hear on occasion complaints from residents, and we try to make sure that we resolve them. A lot of these are logistical things that are difficult. It's a big operation. And we do have a trash contract that's going to be coming up. And the things I'm going to be looking for beyond, you know, day-to-day service are, are the companies staying ahead of the curve on all of the sustainability, the environmental issues that come up in relation to waste management? And for me, that goes way beyond just recycling. We're talking about, we have a massive food waste problem in this country. It's one of the biggest areas of CO2 emissions and just general waste. We have to deal with green waste. Fortunately, we have green waste bins already, but we have to make sure we're sticking on top of that. And I'd like to see zero emission vehicles being used by the company as widely as possible. There are loud vehicles. We all know, we've all been, well, maybe my time is up, but you heard the statement.
Okay, I want to interject something here. Sometimes something that people say you really want to expand on, you're free candidates to take notes. And in the closing statements, if there's something that's incomplete, that's the time to address it as well as, you know, closing. Okay? So don't feel you've been totally muzzled. Okay, Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Bonnie. I am myself an organic vegetable gardener. I have a long, a large backyard filled with produce that I share with my neighbors and friends and strangers sometimes in the community. And I agree, a composting program would be fantastic. I do my own composting from my vegetable scraps and lawn clippings. But I think it would be fantastic if, like Pasadena, we could have a regular recycling event where members could pick up compost and use in their own gardens. I'm generally satisfied with Republic Services, and I look forward to a competitive bidding process this time around for our trash collection. Thank you.
Okay, great. What plan do you have, if any, to revive and grow Alhambra's economy after this pandemic? Let's start with Ms. Perez?
Yeah, so this is extremely critical. You know, as you know, many of our small businesses have significantly lost dollars and are basically facing potentially having to close. And so this is a really, really serious issue. I think there's a couple of things we need to do. We need to continue to seek out both state and federal funds so that we can provide grants and loans to those small businesses that are here in the city of Alhambra. We need to make sure that that information is translated in several different languages because we have many business owners in this community that do not speak English. We also must ensure that we're reducing the third-party fees that many of our local restaurants are charged, Uber Eats and many of these other apps that we utilize to deliver our food oftentimes charge up to thirty-five percent on the orders that we are ordering. And so that is dollars that move away from our local businesses. And other cities have moved to cut that percentage. I think we need to do that here in the city of Alhambra. And beyond that, I think we also need to establish local hire. We need to make sure that all jobs in the city of Alhambra are going to local residents.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Maloney?
Well, that's the hundred thousand dollar question, isn't it? How do we revive our local economies? Not just because of COVID, but because the hurting that brick and mortar establishments have been going through over the last several years due to everything being available online. You know, I think we're all guilty of sometimes taking the easy way out and just clicking our way through to having things dropped off on our doorstep, especially during this time. But we really need to look at what is not offered online? What can we offer people to attract them to come to our city and patronize our local businesses? One thing that always comes to my mind is that Alhambra is, even still to this day, is a sort of foodie dream. You know, it's a dining utopia for the region. We have such diversity, such incredible ethnic food, especially Chinese and other Asian foods. We need to highlight that. We need to make ourselves known for that. I also think we need to look at reinvigorating a tech, new media, creative core. We have an industrial area that I currently think is somewhat underutilized near Palm and Vine down there. And I think that we really need to revitalize that as a new industry.
Thank you. Ms. Olson?
Well, there are a lot of things that make a city unique and vibrant, including its businesses and institution. But most notably, people and our community itself. And I think this is an especially challenging time for retail and restaurant businesses upon which most of our local economy is based. Most of those face a forty to sixty percent reduction in sales and their burden with overhead that cannot be reduced in an equivalent manner. And I think in the months ahead, we'll lose some of our community's most cherished businesses and some of those restaurants. I think our community has failed for a long time to build resiliency into our local economy by encouraging a diversity of business types. And I think the smart plan going forward is to provide support for business incubator and job training services, while at the same time taking advantage of the obvious opportunity provided by the proximity of Alhambra to major institutions like J P L, Caltech, the USC Marshall School of Business for advice and technical support. We must work to bring higher-paying jobs to our community, jobs that pay a living wage.
Thank you. And Mr. Mejia?
Hi. First of all, I find it amusing that my opponent wants to help small businesses when she's a proponent of Proposition Fifteen, which will actually increase property taxes for those small businesses that already suffering. One of the things I have done, along with some of my, the former mayor, Roz Maza, is that we've talked to a lot of the businesses to see what their needs were. I mean, and we started actually working with traffic, especially the restaurants, getting at the outdoor dining. One of the things we've also been working for the past year or so has been the, just looking to study how we can bring more businesses to Valley Boulevard, you know, the east, the west part of Valley, along and also the East Main Street quarter. We actually just passed some money to do a study to see if we can bring an Old Town Alhambra to our community, which would be something nice because now you'll see some business coming in. So there's a study going on. So we've been pretty proactive as a city council because, you know, sales revenue is important for our community. This is what pays for the police. This is what pays for the roads to be fixed. So you have to always, and I'm a big person of working with the chamber because they got some great ideas. So with this pandemic that went on, it's been a challenge, but we're going to get in the right place. We're going to be back to the old Alhambra, but the hat's going to still be here, you know, Fossilman's will be here and all the other good restaurants.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we need ice cream. What are your, what is your thinking on historic preservation? What is the framework in which you see, which you would judge something, whether something is worthwhile? Let's start with Mr. Maloney.
Sure, thank you. A timely question as well. We recently approved a contract for a consultant to come in with a context statement. And the context statement will do essentially exactly what you asked in your question is, what is considered historic in Alhambra? Is it a building that's over a certain age? Is it a home of a certain architectural style? Is it something that is historically significant because a historically significant person lived or worked there? All of these questions are hopefully going to be answered. All of these questions are hopefully going to be answered. One thing that I've learned over the past few years is that I have, I have a lot of ideas about a lot of different things, but I can't force it upon the community. We really have to do the outreach and find out what the community wants to see in a historic preservation ordinance. We have to know what we have. We need to take an inventory and go from there. For me, we have so many beautiful craftsman homes and, you know, Spanish style and Mission style. We have so many beautiful homes in our community. I think we start there. And, you know, anything over 50 years at this point seems like a really good cutoff to begin with. But I'm not the expert. Fortunately, we're hiring one.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Bonnie. Well, actually, I do have some expertise in this field. Years ago, I attended a long summer intensive at the USC School of Architecture on Historic Preservation. Basically, the purpose of historic preservation is to accurately reflect and celebrate the unique story of our community and its people through the built environment. And historic preservation laws are intended not to stop change, but to manage change. I will look for a program that includes passage of a historic preservation ordinance at last, a dedicated staff in the city development office related to historic preservation, the ability to designate historic districts in the city, a survey, everything starts with a survey of historic resources and incentive programs like the Mills Act program that would provide an incentive for owners to sign up to preserve their properties.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Mahia?
Oh, please. Historic preservation is very important in the community. I know we've had this issue for the last 40 years. When I first got elected, it's a big issue because, you know, we try to preserve our history in Alhambra. We have some beautiful buildings, homes in our city that we have to preserve because this is Alhambra. We gotta remember where we came from. Like Mr. Maloney said, we passed the ordinance and we're also working, we're currently working with a contractor to see how the elements of that preservation is gonna work. Ms. Ms. Olson, who is obviously an expert, was brought up my point about the Mills, the Mills Act, you know. But one thing I know that we're working on is hopefully getting a preservation committee. Maybe I don't know if it's gonna stand on itself or maybe work with design review, but that's something that's needed because you need different opinions. You just can't have, and people that have subject matter expert to see what is what is considered preservation or not. I mean, I had, I'm gonna crack a joke, but I had to throw away my 1930 toilet about five years ago. We loved it, but it finally did its time. But it was, it was historical for my wife and I. And even though we try to keep much of the stuff that we had, you know, we have to preserve our history because Alhambra is a beautiful place to live in. That's why people, we, people love Alhambra and don't wanna wanna come and move in our city.
Thank you. And Ms. Perez?
Yeah, so I'm really happy that we have finally seen the city pass a preservation ordinance and that this is finally moving forward after advocates have fought for this for years and years and years. So I'm really, really delighted that that we're now getting somewhere. I think establishing a preservation commission is gonna need to be first and foremost. I think we really need to have the community involved in these decisions. As as we've come to see at meetings, people are very passionate about this issue. And I think really getting community input around what we believe is something that we need to preserve is going to be really critical. I'm excited that the city is, you know, hiring a professional to look into this issue. And I love the idea, as Chris mentioned, of really trying to incentivize owners to continue to preserve their property. We have some incredibly beautiful homes, particularly in North Alhambra. I really like the craftsman style homes. And, you know, I think if we can encourage people to continue to preserve the beauty of these places, that would be a great thing.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Perez? Did I just, I'm sorry that we're finished with that. Okay, um, let us go to environment, which sort of a nice segue from heritage to our environment. Alhambra has a lack of park space. Rating is one of the lowest in Los Angeles County. Currently, the Alhambra Golf Course is utilized only for golfers. Do you envision using this land differently when the contract expires? Let's start with Ms. Olson.
Well, absolutely. Alhambra's a community that's very deficient in parks and green space, which is a factor in health and well being of its residents. And in fact, a study conducted by the LA County Department of Health in 2016 found that we rank near the bottom in the availability of parks and green space per capita. And that relates to issues like premature mortality from heart disease and diabetes, higher prevalence of childhood obesity, and greater economic hardship compared with cities and communities that have more park space per capita. And in fact, one of the suggestions that LA County made for increasing parks and green space was to convert nine of the 18 holes of our golf course, land that was originally gifted to the city, to parkland that is accessible to the public without paying a fee. I think it's something we should talk about. But my opponent made this opportunity for civic engagement much more difficult with a vote to lock in a 10 year contract for grounds maintenance on the golf course that would make it costly for the city to back out. I think that's not good leadership on this environmental issue.
Thank you. Mr. Mahia?
Hello. Oh, hi. Obviously, green space is important to us. I'm sorry. We're actually conducting a city, a couple of seminars coming up for city park improvements. I mean, obviously, during my leadership along with Jeff, we were able to secure the Sharp Clinic, which we're looking to make a community center and hopefully attach it with some more additional green space. As far as the golf course, there's, there's some ideas that we can use it besides just golfing. I like to see some kind of like maybe weekend events where they do some kind of tournaments or even open up their concerts, which is possible to do. We've had, we can use money to get these kind of, these open spaces such as Property 84 and other grants to help us with attaining green space. As a matter of fact, there's, there's a possibility with the 710 not being going through and maybe some of the studies that there might be some green space coming out of that little area by Valley and Boulevard, which would be nice. And I know Mr. Maloney, who's a big advocate of, you know, parks. And I have talked about maybe having a trail park with some water reservoirs in there would be a nice thing for our community. So we're working on it. It's, you know, obviously, we're very, a city that doesn't have much space. But we, we maybe even, you know, but we're gonna get there eventually. And our numbers aren't good for 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 parks, but we'll get there slowly. And maybe we can even ask new developers when they want to build something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Absolutely. You know, I think we need to follow the county's direction on this and go ahead and convert some of that space into park space. But, you know, I do want to highlight that we we are park poor in the city and it's, it is very region specific. And so you'll notice that areas that tend to be a little bit more dense with renters tend to lack access to park space. And so while I do think that it would be excellent to increase the amount of park space by utilizing the golf course, I do think we also need to identify places for pocket parks. I know this has been a big topic of discussion, particularly with the API forward movement. I've certainly had a lot of conversations with both Adele and Jeff about this. And I think that's the direction that we need to move towards. But certainly, we should absolutely take the county's recommendations and go ahead and convert some of that golf course space into park space. Our residents can certainly utilize it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, I think that all options should be, and I think all options are on the table. The the contract for the current golf course was required because the previous operator retired. And we weren't in a position right then to convert it back into public parks and open space. So we have a 10 year contract that actually has an option for renewal after five years if the contract for the golf course is not lucrative for either side. So it's still on the table, absolutely, and as it should be. Golf is is not the sport it used to be. It's not as popular as it used to be. So we need to think about all the appropriate uses. We also need to think about building more parks, new parks in different areas of the community where those spaces are needed. I come from a parks background. I have an expertise in this area. The needs assessment that was mentioned was actually done by the the LA County Open Space Regional Parks and Open Space District. And the needs assessment for the previous Measure A that went through found we had 0.9 acres compared to 0.31 acres plus for LA County. That needs to change. We have great parks, but we don't have enough. Pocket parks, new big parks, expanded community space are all options that need to be on the table.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have some questions, of course, that have come in during this event. And we didn't actually even finish all that's that were pre-submitted. But I do want to highlight some. Do you support the police wearing body cams? Do, I have a question. I don't live in Alhambra. Do the police already wear body cams? They do in Pasadena.
Yes, ma'am, they do wear body cams. And actually, they're a great tool for risk management.
Okay.
We do have, I'll respond when it's my turn.
Okay, it's your turn.
Let me tell you why it's important because, you know, the camera either is gonna disprove or approve the crime. If somebody is committing misconduct or is involved in a use of force, it will capture it when they put their body camera on. Matter of fact, we just upgraded our system within the last year where we got funding to get better equipment, body cam equipment for our officers, because they do save us money. It also helps us out with frivolous complaints when somebody comes in and makes a bad allegation of misconduct as an officer. You have that video to either say he did do it or he didn't. I work internal affairs and I'll tell you one thing that helps out. Everybody is a camera because either these officers are gonna be guilty of doing misconduct, which we have a record of it, or they're gonna be found falsely or found not guilty of misconduct. So we, the cameras are important in our community because it's a risk management issue. It lowers the lawsuits for us because they could defend us if somebody's saying that we did it the wrong. We have video proof. And our great police department, our officers and our command staff have done a great job of utilizing that equipment for our department.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Perez?
So absolutely. You know, unfortunately, I have faced some negative attacks from my opponent and also some of my opponent's supporters claiming that I wanted to fund the police. And this is actually the exact reason why I do not. It is extremely important that we fund equipment like body cameras so that we have footage for both sides, right? So if there is a case where somebody says that there was, you know, an act of inappropriate aggression and there was a case of police brutality, it's then easy to investigate and to, you know, kind of get the story from both sides. And then after that, look at the camera footage to see if it matches up. I think having cameras, especially cameras that you can't turn off, is extremely critical during this time. I think it also helps with building the public's trust when we're in a time period when people are feeling very, you know, questionable, unfortunately, on some of these forces. And so making that clear to the community that, hey, these folks are in cameras at all time. They're there for for the police's safety and also for our safety is really important.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Yes, I think we're gonna have to agree to agree on this one. I think body cameras are extremely important for for a police force, not just to to make sure that residents are protected, but also police are protected because we want to make sure that there is that, there is that objective, essentially an objective witness to every interaction to make sure that we record and we can analyze what actually happened in a situation. I think it's a wonderful learning tool. I know that I've seen various videos that have been produced from our officers' body cams and they're, they're eye opening. They're, it's incredible to see what those officers go through, the actions that they take. And and the, you know, in the ones that I saw at least, the the training that they've received. I'm, I'm pleased that the Alhambra Police Department utilizes them already. And I think that we, it's another example of how they stay ahead of the curve on many of these issues. And I support it and I, and I encourage them to stay on top of these trends and make sure that we are, that we are staying at the, at the cutting edge like we have been in the past.
Thank you. And Ms. Olson?
Yes, we have unanimity, unanimity here. That body cam are good. They keep everybody safe, safer cops and people that are coming to contact with the cops so that we can understand and evaluate and know how to do our jobs better and respond to lawsuits or challenges that may arise. So, so yes, absolutely, body cameras that cannot be turned off. I'm for that.
Okay, thank you. What is your position on Local Measure V? Let's start with Ms. Perez.
Yeah, so I am proud to be the only candidate in my race to have formally endorsed Measure V. Measure V is a great measure. It was signed by over 8,000 residents that fought to get this onto the ballot. It is going to do two things, and that's the first thing it's going to do is create some campaign finance reform, limit donations to $250 per person, and really even the playing field when it comes to running for office. The second thing that it's going to do is establish by district elections. This is extremely important because, as some of you may know, if you have run for office, running for office is extremely expensive. I'm sure all of my colleagues here can attest to that. And so reducing that cost by a fifth, right, because we would go into five districts, would allow for anybody to run. This is really an opportunity for us to open up and expand our democracy. And I want for anybody that wants to put their name on the ballot to be able to get up there and do it and, you know, be able to have access to that. So I think both of these measures are very strong. On top of that, you know, we did include that it would basically limit donations that would come from developers. Also, a very important component, I'm very proud to not be taking money from developers. And I think that's an important measure that was added into that to avoid a conflict of interest for city council members that are currently running for office.
Okay, um, Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you. I support Measure V and I endorse Measure V. So I checked and my name wasn't on the website, but maybe that is the webmaster, including me. I actually was appointed by my fellow council members to be part of the team that negotiated the consensus Measure V that we're calling it. This is a hybrid of the original measure that was proposed. The count, I led the council on proposing an alternative measure that would give the voters a choice in what electoral system they wanted to choose. Long story short, it did face a legal challenge and it didn't seem right to me, given the the costs and benefits. It didn't seem right to me to to spend money to fight that in court. So the district election system offers a lot of positives. I'm really pleased that we're going to be limiting campaign contributions to $250, especially in conjunction with the district elections. Right now, we have to run citywide and it's a very expensive process. So limiting to one district will make it much more feasible with a 250 limit. I was actually the one that that also proposed prohibiting money from developers, city contractors and political action committees. And I'm not receiving money from them either.
Thank you. Keep that thought and that can be in your closing. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. Yes, in fact, I've adopted the principles of Measure V in my own campaign. I'm not accepting any contributions larger than $250 from any person or business, period. In fact, I've given money back to contributors who have been overzealous. Currently, we have a system that allows campaign donors to give unlimited contributions to candidates for municipal office and requires district based city council candidates to run in statewide elections. And as my colleagues have pointed out, it increases the cost of running for elected office and the likelihood of improper influence, either real or perceived by campaign contributors over elected officials. I think it's pretty basic to the democratic process that those with greater means should not have greater representation in government. And in fact, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, in speaking about the, about the Consumers United case, said, "I think that the notion that we have the democracy that money can buy strays very far from what democracy is supposed to be." Measure's been in, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mahia?
You know what, it's, I know the people of Alhambra got a petition and we, the city, have actually supported it, you know, even though, but we did work with the the organization that put up the measure. I know Mr. Maloney was part of that group and we were able to tweak out some of the conditions in there. And I know as a city, we're, we're gonna let the people decide. I know there was a threat of litigation if we didn't put it up by by that certain group. I kind of, I work internal affairs and I find it amusing that my opponent says that she takes no money for special interests when she got 33% from special interest groups, including one developer. So to me, that would be a false and misleading statement. But like I said, we're gonna let the people decide and it's a good thing because obviously, money does affect, you know, elections, obviously. And we've seen it in other cities, you know, where people pay to play in Los Angeles. There's one councilman that recently got arrested on, just on the other side of town that I believe my, my opponent actually interned for them. So obviously, it's important. The people will decide. And even if it doesn't pass, the city is gonna pass an ordinance to bring those type of, that type of thing to the city of Alhambra, which is the district being at the campaign reform.
Okay, thank you. Describe your financial experience, especially as it applies to overseeing large budgets. And let's start with Mr. Maloney.
Yes, I, I am Chief Staff Counsel for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and for the Joint Powers Authority called the Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority. We have four, four agencies that do the kind of work that we do. We have extremely large budgets. We've been through, you know, multiple years where budgets have fluctuated up and down. We've had various levels of revenue and, and expenses depending on what is happening in a given fiscal year. It's, it's a big job on, I'm not in charge of the budget, but I am obviously intimately involved in the operations of an organization like that. As it relates to the City of Alhambra, it's a much bigger and even more complicated budget and it's a process that takes a lot of work. I've been pushing for more accessibility and transparency and more public input into our budgeting systems. I know that's important to many people in our community, but we have a large budget and we have a budget that is not all unrestricted. We have dedicated sources of funding, we need to go to certain areas, so.
Thank you.
Continue.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Olson?
Yes, I am not in charge of multimillion dollar budgets, however, I am on the side of raising money to cover budgets for not, my nonprofit clients. In fact, my grant raising, grant writing raises more than half of the budget of my current client in Pasadena, which is many hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so I'm familiar with the process of developing a budget as well as funding a budget. I am also on the side of increased public participation of, for the citizens in the understanding and development of the budget for the City of Alhambra.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mahia?
All right, well, I mean, being a father and, you know, we obviously own our home, my fat wife and I, we know how to balance a budget for ourselves. You know, we know we gotta pay our bills on time, we know we have to have money for our kids' events and, you know, for mortgage, every inner food. So that's the small time budget, but I've also been a treasurer in my friends' campaigns as well, where I have, where I learned a little bit. And the good thing is, as an elected official, I have approved over four years' worth of balanced budgets, which is important in our community, because we're physically conservative in Alhambra. And one thing is, we always have that money, especially this past COVID where we could, a lot of cities went bankrupt, we were able to survive. So that experience, you know, that you have, is valuable as an elected official. The current council, all of us stepped up as leaders for this election, because we could have gone in the tank and been bankrupt, but no, we were able to survive, get through our services for, for, get our employees not to be laid off. We have every service still continue, even, even though, you know, people were not working and, because we care about our community. We have people that actually live and work here and they're part of our family. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and Ms. Perez?
Yeah, so I, I actually have a lot of experience specifically with budgeting. In particular, I have served on several nonprofit boards where I've had to look over multimillion dollar budgets. And so I really started this experience in college. And so at Cal State LA, I was part of a group called Associated Students, Inc. And so we would look over our multimillion dollar budgets and give grants out to student groups. I also served on Cal State LA's foundation board and we have a massive budget of $30 million that we would look over. And that's money that comes in so that we can bring things like a Dreamers Resource Center, which we eventually built at the university, and we could also allocate scholarships. And many of these folks were, you know, both private donors and public donors. And lastly, I currently serve on the Asian Youth Centers Board, that's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that serves immigrant youth here in the San Gabriel Valley. We have a multimillion dollar budget and we really allocate those dollars to ensure that youth have the resources they need in order to be successful.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, what is your experience dealing successfully with conflicts? Let's start with Ms. Olson.
Well, you don't get to be my age without learning how to deal with conflict. And I would say that my experience dates back to one of my earliest jobs as Director of the Pasadena Ray Hotline, when I worked with the community and the police in roll call training of officers regarding sexual assault and how to deal with sexual assault survivors and victims. And it taught me a lot about allies and, and how to, how to find common ground on an issue that threatens a lot of people. So I'm a trained crisis counselor and I am trained in trauma-informed care. So I have kind of a lot of experience in working with people in crisis and understanding how to resolve conflicts that arise from crisis.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mahia?
Yes, ma'am, you know, being, you know, paying 50 years old, obviously, I'm in law enforcement, obviously, and I deal with conflicts every day. Matter of fact, I was assigned to a specialized unit that dealt with workplace investigations where we dealt with issues of conflict between employees. I consider myself a subject matter expert, because you investigate conflicts and to see if they occur or not, because this type of conflict, if the conflict is bad, it costs the city a lot of money, you know, with lawsuits for, you know, such as retaliational sexual harassment, any of those type of deals. So conflicts are gonna occur and I do have some expert. Matter of fact, I got two kids and I always had to deal with their conflicts because they're gonna fight with one another. But then a day is, you have to be able to know how to mediate, like just as Ms. Olson said, I've been trained in mediation as well. So I do have a little bit of experience for this and it's an important aspect, especially in city council, because there's gonna be times where we're all mad, but then it is, we gotta work together as a team to get that stuff passed for any kind of issues we have going.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
So my background is really, I'm, you know, a policy advocate and I also lead a policy education program for college students, both with the UC, the CSU and the community college system. And so this is actually something that we have to learn to navigate as we're advocating for policy, right? Oftentimes, we do not get everything we want when we're advocating for policy. And so we need to learn to meet in the middle. And so I've definitely been a part of many conversations where, you know, we have to give a little, they have to give a little in order for us to settle on an agreement. I think my history, passing successful policy and being part of really historic decisions is reflective of my success as, you know, both somebody that's able to negotiate and handle conflict really well and work with people that I think we often see as unlikely allies. You know, I've had the opportunity to work with the LA Chamber of Commerce. We've worked with, with unions as well. And so we work with all kinds of entities when doing this kind of advocacy and it's
Thank you.
really in the middle.
Okay, thank you very much. Our time is actually sort of gone, so we're gonna do one more question.
A body
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Maloney, of course, I apologize. Our time isn't gone, we have plenty of time.
Thank you. Well, I will say first that David took my punchline. I was gonna say that any parent of young kids during COVID and remote learning and where they should have been at summer camp, but were instead running around my kitchen, knows much about conflict resolution.
Right.
I, I will say that, you know, I have had, as an attorney and just as a person in life, I've had a lot of experience brokering differences and, and overcoming conflicts between parties. I, I've been told many times that I'm too nice and that I, I try to make everyone happy and I'm guilty as charged, because I do think it's important that we find common ground in our civic discussions, in our communities, nationally, locally, I think it's important. I see myself as somebody who is a bridge builder between different groups who may not agree with each other all the time. And that includes, you know, in the community, occasionally on the council, in my own family. I pride myself on that and I, and I endeavor to continue to do that, to bridge those, build those bridges.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for correcting me too on the time. Okay, I am going to get one more in. And it's gonna take all of three seconds. Your answer will either be yes, no, or pass. Do not explain your answers. The question is, do you support California Proposition Number 15 entitled "Schools and Communities First"? We'll start with Mr. Mahia.
No.
Perez?
Yes.
And Maloney?
It was, uh, pass.
Okay, and Ms. Olson?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, folks, you got through it beautifully. I'm really sort of glad I'm not voting in this election or this is out of my jurisdiction, because there are really some excellent candidates, in my opinion. Okay, so we're now up to the time of the closing statements, in which each candidate has the opportunity to complete the answers, as I had said, if left, if you feel it was left incomplete. Also, as we are missing the accustomed in-person meet and greet after the forum closes, please emphasize your website in your closing, where candidates may learn more about you or can contact you. I'm giving you two minutes each, if that's okay. You don't have to use it, brevity is good, but you can use up to two minutes. Let's, let's see, we're going in reverse order of the opening, so let's start with Ms. Olson.
Thanks, Bonnie. First, I want to correct my colleagues, Alhambra has not passed a historic preservation ordinance. We have begun that process with hiring a historic resources group to develop historic statements, context statement, but it's probably at least a couple of years down the road before we can adopt a preservation ordinance. I want to clarify that. Also, I want to talk about how important it is for our leaders to take criticism seriously, but not personally. Our democracy was founded on the principle that government can be improved and adapted to more effectively serve the people in order to form a more and if we're going to do that, we must both study what's not working well and celebrate what is. We're facing so many challenges right now and all of them seem to be at a crisis level. There's the pandemic, massive wildfires caused by climate change, systemic racism, housing and homelessness, economic upheaval, and all of these threaten the health of our families and our community. The only way we're going to survive is by taking care of one another. And that means working together to understand and rectify the missteps of the past so that we can move forward together. I think there's reason to be optimistic. Throughout history, terrible things have, events have led to great transformations because they show us the ways that we've been doing things that actually hinder our existence. I hope you'll join me in my people-powered campaign fueled by small donations and generous hearts, people who love their community and want to make it work better for all of us. My website is chrisolsonforalhambra.com. I ask you to vote yes on Measure V and Chris Olson for Alhambra, mine is the very first name at the top of your ballot. And I also want to thank my sisters and brothers in the League of Women Voters for moderating and thank all of you in the audience for showing up tonight to listen and learn. Thank you for your tough questions and be sure to go out and vote.
Thank you so much. Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, thank you. Once again, thanks for this opportunity to share my vision for our community with all of you. I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm an environmental attorney and I'm working to create a safer, more sustainable world for all of us. I'm also an elected official, but more importantly, I'm your neighbor. I have the same hopes, fears and concerns as you. And as your council member, I've spent the last four years working to improve our city every single day, to make our community safer, more inclusive, more economically stable. In short, I've done my best to make Alhambra a place that we can all be proud to call home. One issue that we didn't really delve into tonight very much was the issue of Sustainability Action Plan that I proposed and my colleagues supported, and I appreciate that. It will include climate resiliency actions, that will include across the board policy, comprehensive policy changes throughout the city. I'm really looking forward to the opportunity for that. There's many reasons to be concerned, but I'm an optimist at heart and I, I think Alhambra's best days are ahead of us. It's gonna require a lot of work, like I said, but I think we can do it and I appreciate that. I want to give special thanks to my supporters, volunteers, friends and family. You may have heard some of them in the background, eating popsicles, taking showers and doing various other things around here. These last several months have been extremely challenging for many reasons and I couldn't have done this without all of your support. You help, you helped me to run a positive and optimistic campaign that you can be proud of. Most importantly, I need to thank my wife and my partner in life at Kiko, Alhambra High School, class of 1996. And I want to say I love you and I appreciate the sacrifices and the support you've given me. I've spoken from the heart tonight and I hope I conveyed that my top priority is serving you, making our town the best it can be. I'd ask you to join in with Judy Chu, Ed Chow, the Sierra Club, the LA County Federation of Labor, and I just got a phone call, literally as I was getting on, that Supervisor Hilda Solis offered her endorsement to me. My website is jeffmaloney2020.com, I hope you visit. Thank you, good night and go Dodgers.
Okay, Ms. Perez? Ms. Perez?
I was muted.
We won't tell.
So I wanted to start off by thanking all the Alhambra residents who took the time to join us today, to the League of Women Voters for hosting this and for still putting this on despite the fact that we are facing a worldwide pandemic. I'm so proud to be running to represent my hometown of Alhambra. I know this community, but most importantly, this community knows me. You have watched me grow up and you have watched me lead with integrity. I'm the only candidate who And although my opponent will continue to try to cast unions in the same light as corporations, I stand with unions and I believe that those blue collar workers have banded together in order to fight for workers' rights, not just for themselves, but for all of us across the nation. I also want to take a chance to just thank my friends, my family, every single one of you that has, that has made this campaign so successful. We have outraised the entire field, something that I'm gonna be perfectly honest, I didn't even think was possible when I chose to step up and do this. And that's because of every single one of you at home watching. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking a chance and supporting me. I hope that all of you will join Supervisor Hilda Solis, the California Democratic Party, the Alhambra Teachers Association and the Sierra Club in supporting me, Sasha Renee Perez, for Alhambra City Council. If you would like to learn more about my campaign, please head to my website, it's sashareneyperez.com. Sign up, donate and join me in making a better Alhambra.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Mahia?
First of all, thank you Legal Women Voters, residents and all of who participated this evening. I grew up saying, ideas without a plan are just a pipe dream. I've heard many claims about what great things my opponent will do, but I have not heard a plan as how she will actually get them done. I have demonstrated over the last three years that I've implemented a solid plan for the city that has helped us during these troubled times. I've been on regional and state boards that have provided us funding and service to our city. I don't need to tell you what my priorities are, you can see for yourself what my values are, public safety, parks and recreation, fighting for homelessness and providing services for residents and small businesses. You can see for yourself that I have devoted my time to reduce traffic while fighting for the seven, ten freeway completion since 2014 and I've been a Little League coach and an AYSO coach and served on both the HCDH committee and Parks and Recreation for eight years prior to being elected city council. While I was serving and working hard for our residents, I continued my regular full-time job. This election is being portrayed as new ideas versus old ideas, renters versus homeowners and the businesses versus residents, but this campaign is about the future of Alhambra and having someone with ideas and having someone with a plan about, about someone claiming to fight for renters' rights versus bringing resources to those renters so they can become a homeowner or making the American dream of owning a home affordable. And this is about equality as well and ensuring that our kids don't get penalized for having good grades, but not, for not meeting our race quota, which, why I'm against Prop 16 again. If you give me the opportunity to serve again, I will continue to serve all of Alhambra. Remember, this is not the time to be divisive, this is time to work together to keep Alhambra a special place to live in. God bless people from Alhambra. And one last thing, I'd like to thank, thank my lovely wife Carmen, who's the vice principal of one of our school district, my two kids for being out there after walking with me as well, all my family and friends, my supporters. You know, endorsements aren't important for starting folks, but you know who the but you know who the biggest endorsements are for me are the voters of Alhambra that are going to elect me hopefully in the next, coming up election. So please vote for me, Mahia, for Alhambra City Council. And if you need any further information, you can go on www.counsellmandavidmahia.com and you can find me on Facebook under Re-Elect David Mahia as well as Instagram.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, I think that's it. As stated in the beginning, uh, the League of Women Voters service, uh, goal is to promote and inform and involve electorate. We hope we've succeeded this evening in helping you to be better informed about the issues, the candidates' positions on these issues. And we hope the candidates learned more of residents' concerns. Now, we turn things over to the attendees, which is Zoom talk for audience, uh, for the involved part. The voters, please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot and urge your friends and family to do the same. If you've received a vote by mail ballot, which all of you have, if you've been registered, uh, but if that vote by mail ballot is sitting on the kitchen table, it's not going to count unless mailed in or brought to the polls. Uh, and by the latest, hopefully much earlier than November 3rd, those, uh, who are registered receive something that looks like this. Okay, and I am so impressed. Um, on the backside of it, it tells where, by, you know, your location, your address, uh, you can put your mail in a drop box if you don't want to put it in the actual mail, you know, USPS slot. However, you can actually choose any place, uh, to, any mail slot in the county to mail it. But if you did get this and you're registered, um, it's just on the flip side. Uh, so please do that. To help with questions of registration, re-registration, tracking the progress of your submitted ballot, we do have a screen image which you can capture with your phone or other, uh, device. And our web host will be putting that up fairly quickly. Before I sign off, I do want to thank everyone who's participated and it was a big cast of, to get this on. Um, and of course, our local, uh, nonprofit organizations. While I'm talking, take out your phone, take a picture and you can use QR codes later to access these things. People make choices and choices make history. We, the people, can be the people to have our choices count. So the community and candidates of Alhambra are depending on you to vote. Thank you so much for this opportunity on behalf of League of Women Voters and our co-hosts. Thank you and good night.